Apollo's Girls do not have a JV basketball team. They don't have a C. It won't be long as one, it's one, it's a crowd too, or it'll be two.
Yeah.
I ended up going to work and I'm out there trying to start trucks for my drivers when they came in.
Are you guys ready?
Yep.
Up there?
Yeah.
Ready? Alright. Everybody else ready? Alright, I call this meeting to order. All members are present, including our student senate representative. If we could please stand, say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve, motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Jennifer, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved. Comments? Uh, from the questions for visitors? Okay, and we do not have any visitors today. Next item would be the consent, uh, agenda. Is there anything that people want to remove from the consent? Otherwise, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Sunny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved. And then that brings us to, uh, action items. Let's go through this. Item six A, approval of a payment to Cold Spring Bakery.
I'll make a motion to approve a payment to Cold Spring Bakery, check one zero five two nine zero, an amount of four hundred fifty-one and dollars and ninety cents.
Motion by Sunny for payment to Cold Spring Bakery.
Second.
Second by Kara, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
abstain.
Alina stanes. The motion carries. Item six B, revised budget. Uh, Beth had presented the budget at our last meeting. Uh, was there any questions, concerns about the revised budget?
Mr. Chair, that meeting was in December.
Oh, December, oh, yes, sorry about that, yeah. If there's not any further questions, would there be a motion to approve the revised budget as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The revised budget for calendar twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is approved. Uh, item six C, resolution for directing administration.
Yes, uh, this is our annual resolution, um, directing us to make sure that our budget for FY twenty-two is, um, balanced. Um, and so, in order to do that, we may have improvements and we may have reductions and this resolution allows us to start our work. I would recommend that you approve this resolution.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Can I ask a question? It's, is this standard?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem with the resolution, but is this standard process or is this a new process?
No, this is standard, we've done this.
To adopt a resolution, okay, I just don't remember that one.
We've done this all three years I've been here.
Okay. I move to adopt a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore.
Motion by Kara.
Second.
Second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Uh, with being resolution, a roll call vote, please. Jennifer?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries and is approved for, resolution is approved, um, to, uh, direct administration for necessary fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, item six D, resolution to accept donation.
Yep, this is a donation of a garden shed in, uh, in honor of Kay Weber, I believe it was.
Mm-hmm.
And I recommend that the board accept this donation. It was an anonymous donation and we thank the anonymous donor.
I don't know if everyone knows, but Kay's husband Mike used to teach for us, so.
Okay, if you did not know that, thanks Lynn.
I will move to accept the, uh, donation of the garden shed.
Um, a motion by Sunny?
Second.
Second by Kara. Any further discussion? Again, resolution, um, so roll call vote, Jennifer?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Uh, the resolution is approved as presented and thank you for the donation to the school. Uh, discussion items. Item seven A, policy.
So these are second readings of our, um, policy work under, um, six eleven, that's public data request, six thirteen, uh, six fourteen. And then, um, also, first readings of our title, title one, parent development policy, school curriculum instruction goals. And, um, we have our next policy meeting a week from Monday, or a week from Wednesday to, uh, to do, answer any questions people have. But others, so far, we've not had any questions on those policies.
So, so one of the things that we were discussing at the policy was just, uh, trying to make sure our enrollment numbers were in line with other districts. Um, so we're looking at that, um, component of, um, the enrollment piece.
Oh, uh, yes.
So, um, but if, if you have questions, and right now it's, it's, but we're doing some research, so we do have two more readings before it would be finalized. So, um, definitely let us know if you've got questions about that piece. And then, at the last, uh, organizational meeting, we talked about, uh, coming together for, uh, a more structured updating of our, uh, visitor comments from visitor, or comments from visitors. And so, we're in the process of gathering data for that too, so. Was there any other questions about those policies? Then, uh, it, next, uh, meeting, the six eleven thirteen and fourteen would be the final reading. And then the, uh, other three, eight one eight five, and then enrollment would be the second reading at our next meeting. Was there any other questions about those policies? Then, uh, it, next, uh, meeting, the six eleven thirteen and fourteen would be the final reading. And then the, uh, other three, eight one eight five, and then enrollment would be the second reading at our next meeting. Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Can I ask a question? It's, is this standard?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem with the resolution, but is this standard process or is this a new process?
No, this is standard, we've done this.
To adopt a resolution, okay, I just don't remember that one.
We've done this all three years I've been here.
Okay. I move to adopt a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore.
Motion by Kara.
Second.
Second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Uh, with being resolution, a roll call vote, please. Jennifer?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries and is approved for, resolution is approved, um, to, uh, direct administration for necessary fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, item six D, resolution to accept donation.
Yep, this is a donation of a, uh, garden shed in, uh, in honor of Kay Weber, I believe it was.
Mm-hmm.
And I recommend that the board accept this donation. It was an anonymous donation and we thank the anonymous donor.
I don't know if everyone knows, but Kay's husband Mike used to teach for us, so.
Okay, if you did not know that, thanks Lynn.
I will move to accept the, uh, donation of the garden shed.
Um, a motion by Sunny?
Second.
Second by Kara. Any further discussion? Again, resolution, um, so roll call vote, Jennifer?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Uh, the resolution is approved as presented and thank you for the donation to the school. Uh, discussion items. Item seven A, policy.
So these are second readings of our, um, policy work under, um, six eleven, that's public data request, six thirteen, uh, six fourteen. And then, um, also, first readings of our title, title one, parent development policy, school curriculum instruction goals. And, um, we have our next policy meeting a week from Monday, or a week from Wednesday to, uh, to do, answer any questions people have. But others, so far, we've not had any questions on those policies.
So, so one of the things that we were discussing at, uh, the policy was just, uh, trying to make sure our enrollment numbers were in line with other districts. Um, so we're looking at that, um, component of, um, the enrollment piece.
Oh, uh, yes.
So, um, but if, if you have questions, and right now it's, it's, but we're doing some research, so we do have two more readings before it would be finalized. So, um, definitely let us know if you've got questions about that piece. And then, at the last, uh, organizational meeting, we talked about, uh, coming together for, uh, a more structured updating of our, uh, visitor comments from visitor, or comments from visitors. And so, we're in the process of gathering data for that too, so. Was there any other questions about those policies? Then, uh, it, next, uh, meeting, the six eleven thirteen and fourteen would be the final reading. And then the, uh, other three, eight one eight five, and then enrollment would be the second reading at our next meeting. Um... And then seven C, uh, oh, that's the enrollment for twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So this is our, uh, uh, January report. And so you can see that we're, um, holding strong with our twenty-two fifty, which has been our average for the year. Um, it is, again, as we've said many times, it's below what we projected, um, but we are staying steady where we started this, in the start of the school year at. So there, there's really no new, I mean, you can see the spreadsheet that's there in front of you. Um, it's good news that we're, that we're holding steady. Also with that, you see, um, the resolution for discussion tonight on, um, our open enrollment. So as you know, back in August, we, um, went to, uh, open enrollment as a resolution that limited to where we could be class size in response to COVID. And, um, tonight's the discussion for that. Uh, I can tell you that we've discussed this administratively and we, we feel like we can let this resolution lapse going into next year, but just wanted to have some discussion tonight around, um, allowing the resolutions to lapse and allowing open enrollment to be like it hasn't been in previous years. I can tell you that we've had seventeen students already, um, look to open enroll at Recore next year, outside of what our current open enrollment is. So we do want to be able to start thinking about getting back to those families and saying, yes, Recore is the place for you to be, uh, next year.
And that's the consensus of your administration?
Correct.
As well?
Correct, yep.
And I, I guess, I, I mean, for this year, this is what we had adopted, uh, the resolution. Um, obviously, things can change, but, I mean, looking at how things are going, I would hopefully expect that that trend would allow us to be in a position to serve, you know, uh, the open enrollment students, um, at our district without impacting us negatively because of any COVID restrictions that we would have potentially. But, obviously, we'd have to look at that when it gets closer to.
Yep.
To that point, you know, with, as our numbers are changing, uh, is, is there anything with where we are currently with our numbers and opportunities? I think, I, I can't pull up the, where we have, oh, some.
Well, we, we still have opportunities and, and we still take some students in, depending on the grade level. You can see that we are, um, we are closed at first grade at John Clark and Richmond. We are closed in second grade right now and we're closed at John Clark in fifth grade. Otherwise, we are still accepting open enrollments in the rest of those grades or buildings by grade. Um, right now, you're not seeing a lot of movement, um, but if they would come our way and they, we can fit them in, we have fit them in. So basically, what the resolution did was just limited the class sizes to what we could be COVID safe.
Are, are we doing anything to promote or just an awareness for community and where, where there's potential openings or?
We, yeah, we have sent that out and that wasn't in, um, WJON or I think it was a newspaper. We haven't, uh, done anything recently, but we certainly, this will make the news again, uh, WJON or Abby, Abby Faulkner will call me tomorrow and say, what happened at the board meeting? And we'll, we'll talk through some of the things and we'll get some press that way.
Okay.
I guess in my opinion, if administration feels comfortable letting this lapse, I mean, it goes, it's been through the rest of this school year, um, then I think we let it lapse. And if we have to revisit it at a later date, we revisit it earlier than that.
And you have other questions on that item? Okay, then on to item eight A, superintendent report, uh, COVID update.
You have some really good news, uh, today. Um, as, as you all know, required in, in order for us to make moves, um, with our in-person instruction, we are required to have a consultation. That, uh, consultation happened this morning with members of, um, MDE, MDH, uh, Recore administrative team, um, Stearns County Health and our regional representative. And that happened this morning at eight thirty via Zoom. Um, and so, at that meeting, we presented our, um, COVID, um, return to instruction, uh, in-person instruction plan. It was accepted by that team and so, um, starting February first, our kindergarten through fifth grade will, will be in person as they are right now. Just a reminder that, that that is not, uh, a consultation was not needed for that, but it was included in our plan so that we knew we were being thorough. We will start our sixth through eighth graders on February first in, in, in-person instruction. And just a reminder, um, we, we can only bring three grade levels back at a time per building and so we were allowed to bring all, all sixth, seventh and eighth graders back, um, into the middle school. And then at the high school, we are going to start with our ninth graders coming back on February first in person. And then on February sixteenth, we will bring back our tenth through twelfth graders. So, February first through the tenth, our tenth through twelfth graders will continue their AB schedule. And then on February eleventh, all night through eleventh, uh, sorry, all night through twelfth graders will have a distance learning day. That day will incorporate the, the, uh, prep time that's required. Um, and then on the sixteenth, those four grade bands will be allowed to, um, come back full person instruction. So we will have all students back February sixteenth.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, just some questions that I've been asked as far as the quarantine process. Once we have all students back, um, whether it's February first and it's six through nine or February sixteenth and it's pre-K through twelve, how will the quarantine process work? Will it be, if somebody in the classroom tests positive, the entire classroom? Or will it kind of match what busing is doing now where it's like a quadrant?
Yeah. So, um, Nate and I and Stephanie were on that call this morning and that's a really good question that came up. Um, diligence for seating charts, especially in the sixth through twelfth grade will be important. So that if we have a positive test, that those people that are in that six-foot area would then be, um, would be quarantining. And we could, we could potentially not quarantine the rest of the class as long as we, again, do, do that diligence of, um, making sure kids sit in the right area, they're spread out as best they can. Be very similar to what we talked about in the bus, yes. It hasn't been that easy at the elementary level, just because of the mixing, um, of the cords. We had, unfortunately, we had a case like that today. Um, but we believe at the secondary level, it's going to be a little easier.
Okay. Um, and then the other question that I got, um, was related to if a student or a parent didn't want the student to be back in person with everybody. Do they have the option to continue in distance learning without having to go to edgenuity? Or do they have to choose either between in-person every day, all day, or, or edgenuity? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Nate, did you want to answer that?
We have not talked about that, but, uh, it would be the university or the edginess, we have to choose.
Okay.
It's a lot of different.
Right.
Hold out, it's reasonable, to edgenuity, any time they'd like, just kind of come back, try not to be, like, uh, be the same.
And if, if a group of students has to quarantine, will they have the opportunity to continue to participate in classes virtually? Or will they just be without any instruction for the period of quarantine?
Well, I, I think we can, we should be able to accommodate that. We're doing that now with the, you know, AB hybrid schedule. So if you, if you are a student and you're, you're still remoting in on B days. So, there wouldn't be any difference between if you're in quarantine to be able to remote in.
As long as we would have the same instructions, we have an additional, those, uh, probably the one they have, very.
Right.
It would, it would be similar to, I don't know, a medical trial, it's a little easier.
Yeah.
So, it would be all the same. It's both the same experience, it's the same, I don't know, you know, something's, you know, a little bit different.
Yeah.
Those are good questions, thank you Sunny. Any other questions?
If you could maybe just give an update on our numbers for the county and the district? Um, I don't know if you have those available, because I think, uh, obviously, they've been trending down because we are in a position to, you know, make this happen. But I think it's good for, you know, community members and parents and students to know that, you know, this is all because of the good work that we've done to try to mitigate, you know, the, this issue. And so, um, now because of everybody wearing their masks and following some of these rules, we're seeing the positive impact that we're able to, you know, bring kids back.
Yeah.
Because of numbers, so.
Thanks for that question, Jason. Uh, as of last Thursday, the county was at forty-three point oh four, um, and our community was at twenty-six point oh six. Um, we had last, as of last Thursday, we had a total of six active cases all throughout the district with twenty-four, um, students in quarantine. So, pretty, pretty small numbers compared to where we were at, uh, late November, early December, uh, before we went into the full distance learning. Um, today's county number individually was twenty, so there was like twenty cases today. And the state was under eight hundred, so it was a pretty good day of reporting. Now remember, you know, Sunday's usually going into Monday, there's a lower, there's a lower amount of reports, but, uh, we'll see what happens with tomorrow's reporting.
I do have a question. With the transition to a different model, which is the all-day in-person, are we required to offer additional preparation days for the educators?
We are, we are not. We are, we are not. We're, we're good there, so they're, we're good there.
Okay.
And then once we become all in-person, then those half-hour prep time issues, um, also go away with that.
I guess my only other comment, I'm super excited that we're moving toward a model of getting students in the classroom every day. I think one thing that we need to make sure, you know, across the district is to remember that students haven't been in the classroom every day, all day for almost a year. And so it's going to be a pretty big transition for those kids. And I think we just need to make sure that our teachers remember that and we're giving those students some grace in that transition period. Getting used to getting up on a regular schedule every day, five days a week, being in a classroom with other students five days a week. It's just going to be a transition.
We did have that, uh, we had that discussion administratively.
Yeah, and I actually, our academic portion, our, uh, constantly, so it's just that.
I, I also do want to make very clear that should the numbers go backwards on us quickly, the one thing that, uh, um, they, that we talked about today with our consult team is that we can, we can adjust and go backwards as well. We have a backup plan for that and, uh, they were quite impressed that we do have that, we had that thought already, thought out already. And so we know how we're going to go backwards if we do have to go backwards. So, um, confident that we can switch between, it won't be easy, we don't want to do it, but I'm confident we can switch between models.
I got a question, Brad, is, uh, do you know any of the local districts around here, what their plans are? Are a lot of those going back to face-to-face too or?
Uh, yes, um, can't remember exact, let me pull up, can I pull up my notes from the, um, EPT meeting the other night? Oh, you have it there? Okay, thanks. Yeah, um, Albany, I talked to Albany, actually today, there's just a little bit of a change. They're going to go with four days a week, um, and then in March, early March, start with full-time. Um, Sark, Sark Rapids, Sark Rapids is starting February second, full in-person. Sartell is February eighth. Holding Ford, uh, starts tomorrow in-person. St. Cloud is doing a rolling start. They'll be, um, they'll have their hybrid for their high school starting on February first. Kimball's February twenty-second. Foley is in February seventeenth. Uh, Painesville is, uh, March first. Eden Valley right now, Eden Valley Watkins is still going four days a week. They're not sure if they're going to go to five days quite yet. And then New London Spicer actually starts February first, full-time in-person. So we're not the first ones out of the gate and we're not the last ones out of the gate, um, with that. Thank you, Sunny.
And are those dates when they're starting with their three classes per building?
Those are, those are dates that I, when I asked them is when, when will you have everyone?
Okay.
So I, I, that's a great question because I do want to bring that up. When we, we were able to start where we started because we had a plan going out in December. And so we had to kind of stick to that plan, um, that, you know, might have cost a few, a little bit of time in-person. But I think, I still think it was a smart plan to do what we did and plan out for January for families and, and now we're starting our Feb- February planning.
Just one other update that I'm wondering about, if you could maybe comment as far as the employees' ability to get vaccinations for this? And then maybe how that, that could play into like quarantine? So like if that employee who maybe has an exposure, you know, how they would have to or not have to quarantine? And maybe that's a question that needs to get asked.
Well, that question I, Jason, I do not have answered yet on, on whether or not, um, how many days after the second dose will they be required to potentially quarantine? Um, I don't have those answers yet because most of our employees that have had a vaccine has only had their first shot. So, um, just to back up a little bit with vaccination, uh, vaccination has started at Recorey Schools. Uh, we got a, a phone call late on the eighteenth on a Sunday night that we were going to have an allocation of six vaccines, six vaccines. So right away, Monday morning, we started getting our lists together, got our lists together and, uh, got those first six vaccines, um, called and got them set up. I've talked to all six of the people, I think have all gotten their first vaccine. Then this, uh, last Sunday night, or just last night, we got a phone call that Centricare had fifty-two vaccines for us. So this morning, Holly and I and Kayla and, uh, Matt Beckers started making calls. We got those fifty-two vaccines sold for free. And then about, uh, I don't know what time was it, Holly, three-thirty? Three-thirty, I got a phone call that, uh, Centricare had sixteen more free vaccines for us, so we sold those. I think Holly worked on that, it's a little after five o'clock on that. Um, and, and those are for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday this week. And then late in the afternoon, um, we got our allocation of vaccines of eighteen that are similar to the six we got the week before. So tomorrow, we'll start trying to, uh, sell some more free vaccines.
And do we have a sense of like what kind of number of staff that we have that potentially could get the vaccine?
So, um, with that vaccine, vaccination, we are required to have, um, we're retired, required to incorporate or include our contractors. So we have Voight-Buss included, we have Richmond-Buss included and we're in, and all childcare preschool through. So all of those employees are in the hopper. Uh, what is that, five, four hundred and something? I can't remember exactly, I'd have to pull up the spreadsheet. It's a lot, um, and so we just get on the phones and start working the phones.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know, um, the total number of eligible employees, contractors that would be eligible for a vaccine. And based on what you shared, i- am I correct, is my math right? Ninety-two vaccines have become available just in the last week or so?
Yep.
It was the first six, then you said fifty-two, sixteen more and now eighteen more?
Yep.
So it's trying to, just try to paint a, a more clear, logical picture of available, um, participants and available vaccines that we can get.
It feels like we're about a quarter of the way through our list.
About quarter of the way, okay.
So yeah, we're about twenty to twenty-five percent, but if we can continue to get about a hundred a week, and I don't know if that's realistic, that would be.
Uh, you know, we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as you, if you've probably read and saw the news, you know, St. Cloud Schools got a vaccine for every employee. Um, Sartell and Sark Rapids got large numbers. So if any of those people turn them back in, then they become available to us, um, in the outer ring. So, um, that's how that, that's how that's kind of working, so. I shouldn't say Sark Rapids because Sark Rapids is part of Benton County. It was Sartell and St. Cloud, they got large numbers of, of doses from Centricare.
Is there any reason they got more or is it just based on their populations?
I, I, you know, we weren't given any reasons. Uh, we're thankful, that's one of these things where we just have to be thankful and we're doing the best we can. And of course, you know, we get, we get our lists and we get curveballs thrown at us. Just a reminder, you can't ask them if they want, you know, if they, don't survey them, you know, that's, that's not push, that's not, uh, real legal to, to ask people that they're going to, that they want the vaccine ahead of time. So you don't ask those personal hip of, um, questions, you don't want that data. Um, and then as we're making our list, we're including our non-publics because that was the first one that came out. Well, now the non-publics have their own list, so, you know, we had to back, back those, um, employees out. And so, yeah, so we, it's just, uh, it's been a process, but it's, it feels good that we're starting to see vaccinations be used here at Recorey. And as another, the last update I wanted to give you was that we did do our first testing event last Thursday. So, uh, Tracy Coiman and Missy, um, and Deb Heine, uh, each did a vaccination clinic, um, in their buildings. And we had fifty-four, four, fifty-four people test, um, and so we hope to see that increase, um, as just, as that screening tool for COVID-nineteen.
And did we become aware of how many of those were positive or negative? Do we, do, do, do we have that data or?
Um, we do, we do. I, I really should not release that publicly because it could be identifiable.
Okay, just trying to weigh the efficacy of doing that.
Let's just say it was a good thing we did it.
Any other questions for Brad or anything else, Brad?
I think that was all my notes.
Okay. Uh, board committee reports, so if you look at, uh, the portfolio, I basically had just sort of tried to distribute maybe committees that people were on and give people three, uh, to report off of. If, when you get in your committee and you want to change that up, you sure can. Uh, with Chuck just starting out, I think if we can sort of, you know, sort of show Chuck this process and how, how we go through on reporting, um, that's what we'll do tonight and then for the next, uh, next month, Chuck can just report off on the ones that he's got golden for him, so, um. So if you want to start, Jennifer, if you want to?
Just opening that up to see what I report on.
Uh, community education advisory council, confer and the booster club, those are the three.
None of those, please, I'm at.
Okay. Kara?
Where's this list? Is it in our board book?
Yeah. Media, reevaluation resources, ECFE.
HB.
And Stearns County.
We have not met.
Collaborative. Are you through none of those?
I don't, I don't know. I can't find it.
Okay. And then Sunny, uh, school assignments, transportation and facilities and grounds.
Facilities and grounds met, but I didn't know that I was going to be recording on it.
Okay.
So I don't know how prepared I am.
Okay.
We talked about a whole bunch of stuff.
We got to know each other.
Yeah, it was a long meeting.
Yeah.
And I, I'm spacing.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I was there too. It was my first meeting, I don't know, is this, this was a new format of the meeting via Zoom, is that right or?
It wasn't, uh, yeah, I mean, the Zoom was a new, well, you know, we've been doing, we've done a Zoom, it's just been a while since we had the, the committee meeting.
Okay.
I want to say this is probably the second or third time we did it in that format, but.
I did take some notes, um, so if you wanted me to report, I can do that.
Sure.
Uh, we, um, closed out our, um, with our meeting with, um, BCI over the Rick Mitchell Project. We talked, just to walk through that. Um, we, uh, started the work on park, uh, planning for the parking lot between the secondary and Cold Spring Elementary. Uh, it was discussed to prioritize looking at some playground replacements. Uh, we did talk about some upcoming retirements in the department and how we're going to fill those positions. Uh, Brent is going to investigate some grant opportunities through OSHA that will help us with some, um, costs around lighting, shell replacement. That is, that all goes back to improving the safety of our staff. Uh, we talked a little bit about a COVID surcharge to help with some costs around protocols, uh, for rentals. We discussed being open for rentals in the future and how we would look, how we would, um, have COVID-safe plans for those. And, uh, our last conversation was about restarting the, um, land purchase process.
Okay. Um, and then Chuck had policy, which I can report on. We met and you saw some of the policies today, uh, that we are going through the process. And then additionally, like I had mentioned, we were looking at, um, potentially adding a policy for, um, comments and requests from visitors. There is a MSBA model policy that is out there that we are going to review in addition to looking at to what local districts are doing and then trying to get some maybe larger districts, um, what they're doing from in the, in the metro area, uh, where they may have more community members that are giving feedback to sort of get a sense of where that's at. So that'll be on the next policy, um, meeting coming up here in February. Uh, technology, Jennifer, do you want to maybe report off on that?
Yep, so the technology committee met, um, participants in that meeting were Brad, Brian, Chuck, Kara, myself, um, Mr. Gettler and Mrs. Johnson, uh, both as administrator, representing the administration. Um, this is sort of a spin-off committee, I would say, uh, a committee of the board, um, and, uh, the goal of the committee is just to be, uh, participate more in the strategic, um, decisions that are made in relation to the technology. Obviously, COVID has warped speed, our delivery of and need for technology. So this really becomes, this topic has become quite paramount. And how we deliver, and as a teacher, that we try to, uh, get out of the technology such that it's effective in the classroom and delivers, um, you know, um, effective learning. And then, uh, so the, the, we just really, I discussed scope of the meetings, uh, what's going to be the scope of, what are the, what are the overall goals? So, uh, it was a pretty short session, uh, it was really just to inform the committee and put some, formalize our purpose, um, and our vision. And then, um, the next meeting, uh, will be, uh, reviewing the overall strategic plan for the district to just better understand where we were, how we plan here and what our, uh, technology vision is for the next three to five years.
And teaching and learning, who else is on that? Jennifer? That didn't meet, okay. Uh, then Lynn?
Okay, negotiations hasn't met, but the MSBA has a negotiation seminar coming up. So, um, hopefully, members of the negotiations committee can sign up for that. They're virtual, so they have, it's a two-part series and you can sign up for one of the three dates on the first part and one of the three dates on the second part. And it does say to sign up through your district office because it needs to be paid for. So, um, I think it, it seems like even those of us that have been on negotiations always find this helpful because they do talk about what are the current issues that we'll probably find at the negotiation table because, um, there's always something new that we have to deal with. I'm sure there'll be issues related to what we have gone through this year with the pandemic that will show up at negotiations this year. So I think this is good. Um, so that's all I have to say about negotiations. Uh, my catastrophic leave committee did not meet. C had their monthly meeting on, two Fridays ago. The two speakers that day were the, um, it was a political pundit who, um, talked about kind of the political landscape of what he sees happening at the state.
Joyce Olson.
Yeah, um, it's one of those things, I didn't take notes, but I got the feeling he didn't really, he wasn't too sure about what was going to happen either. Everything seems to be up in the air, um, and he was guessing on some things. And then we heard from the chair of the Senate Education Committee and the chair of the House Education Committee. And it was rather interesting because I don't think there are anything in common between where the House is going and where the Senate is going because the, the Senate Education Committee is more focused on some policy changes and they really weren't all that concerned about more money, um, or at least didn't want us to plan for too much more. Whereas the House, um, and it, the chair of that committee must be from the metro area because she.
And she is new to the committee. She's new to the committee.
Yeah, and she was very focused on some of the, um, inequities in education and that, that's going to be a focus at the House level. So, um, both committees are going in different directions. It'll be interesting to see what comes out of both and how they try and reconcile that to get anything through the, the legislature. I don't know, you listened to it too? Did you have any other insight into?
Well, I, I do think that they, they, the, the topic of equity came up with both. And so we'll see how, how, what equity means to both, how the House or the Senate, but.
Yeah, they were talking to C, so they had to bring that up.
Yep, yep. I was glad to hear it though. Uh, it's, it's still very evident, still very clear that zip code does matter when it comes to, um, funding your schools.
And then, oh, the other thing that Brad talked about is that pretty much all of the education associations are on the same page in what they're asking the legislature for. So we'll have a unified front from MSBA, C, um, the Superintendent's Association, and all of the other education associations that will be lobbying this year, which helps because sometimes, you know, some groups go in and ask for, you know, more money in the formula and, and others ask for less in this way. If they're hearing the same thing from everyone, which I believe everyone was saying two percent, um, at least they'll keep hearing a very consistent message across the education community. That's all I have.
Okay, and then I have the Minnesota State High School League. I would just, to that, I, there hasn't been any meetings, but I know that Brad, talked with Brad, and he's been in contact with them, I think, about the mask wearing for events. Um, we are expected to follow those rules.
Correct.
Um, um, so I don't know if there's anything else that?
Nope, it's, it came out last week again on, I think it was Thursday. Um, and I was in the meeting with MSBA, had, um, had Mr. Martins as their lunch and learn for that day. And, uh, he went through a lot of the financial things that are still going on, so that's still, you know, in the air. We still have a second payment coming up here, um, in the second half of the year. Um, but then also they spent some time on, on the masks and the mask-wearing policy is not going away. It is an MDH, an MDE mandate, and so, um, the State High School League is backing it as part of that, so.
The Department of Health, part of that mandate?
Department of Health and Department of Education are both, um, part of the mandate for the masks.
Was there any science there for reasons why in that meeting?
Not, not from Mr. Martin's perspective. His, his perspective was is that we, they have to follow this as the mandate. They want the kids to play activities, then this is what we have to do as required by the MDE, MDH.
Sure, I understand that. I was just more curious about the science to support it. No, no discussion? Okay.
And I had heard, I don't know if you know of any other sport, I thought, that I'd heard that dance may have like some kind of a state meet. And I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but.
May, can you re, can you repeat that? It's hard to hear.
I didn't hear you either.
Well, I was just saying that I, I had heard that, uh, dance is going to have some kind of state meet. I'm not sure if other activities are going to be having a state or where that's at.
So, uh, Ms., uh, Mr. Martin's talked last week about that they're planning for state tournaments. Now whether or not they'll actually happen, um, is still up in the air, but they are making plans for state tournaments.
Uh, Ben Sterns, uh, I guess the item that I wanted to highlight, again, we are in the process of, uh, doing a new director search. Um, so that's hopefully going to get, uh, taken care of, because, uh, her last day is the first of July.
Yep, Alicia will be down with us on June thirtieth.
Or June thirtieth, okay. Um, they did give us, uh, the December twenty-twenty enrollment count. And for Recorey's district, uh, we were down nine students, um, from last year. However, that percentage went up, I think, by point three-four percent, because other districts also went down, but by a greater percentage. So, you know, even though we went down, the percentage of expenses actually just maybe a little bit higher because of those numbers changing, so. Um, yeah, the ten point seven-five is what, uh, our percentage is, so. Otherwise, nothing other too, other too significant. I think they're talking about the plan to return to in-person to, they're developing that plan. So, um, and then one other item, uh, and I'll just read this before we get to the budget. It was put in at the end, um, just the summary of, uh, Mr. Kelvington's formative evaluation. Uh, I'll just read this, um, for those who don't have access. Full board met with Mr. Kelvington on December fourteenth of twenty-twenty. Meeting was closed pursuant to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. Uh, the response, Mr. Kelvington's evaluation focused on the competencies of leadership, judgment, problem analysis, coming, communication, policy law, human resources, organizational management, and political influence governance. The conclusion, board reached consensus that Mr. Kelvington is meeting expectations in the competency areas discussed above. The board also acknowledged Mr. Kelvington's strength in the area of communication. The board expressed appreciation for Mr. Kelvington's accomplishments while also supporting his continued growth in all competency areas to achieve Recorey's goals and new vision. Additionally, the board recognized Mr. Kelvington for his work dealing with the unique challenges of the COVID pandemic during the school year. So, uh, thank you for, uh, your time. And again, we will be, uh, completing a full summative evaluation at the end of the school, school year. So, um, that would be it for board reports. And then I think the last item was a budget comparison report. Um, any questions or comments on the budget comparison report? No? All right, then, meeting is adjourned.
Okay, I mean, it's pretty good, because it says the next one starts at seven fifteen.
What time is it?